I'm gonna open the, we'll get select board meeting of June 1st, 2022 at 6:02 PM. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the minutes of May 18th.
I'm just a motion to approve. I'll second the motion.
Since we have any discussion on the minutes, amendments, changes, deletions. Good, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Comments from the community? Do we have anyone online? No comments from the community. The only correspondence we have is that we received a letter today from the Structures project manager, which is in your packet, saying that due to the infrastruc- federal infrastructure bill, that the cost of our school street bridge, just the construction portion of it, will be paid at 100%. We will have to pay 5% of the engineering portion of that and the right of way, but that's a really nice significantly lower than the 300,000. Okay. I just want to understand. Right?
It's a big question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a presentation tonight from CAI Technologies. Well, I'm so familiar, I just call him Franco. Franco Rossi and Franco, as you indicated, is with CAI Technologies, he's out of Littleton, New Hampshire. Franco has been gracious enough to come, to hold it, to give us a presentation on the services he can offer with regard to online mapping a couple of times in the past. And so at this point, he was going to ask to come again to give us a brief overview of what he can do for the town. We'll get things to be done because the listeners were very excited about the opportunity to have our maps and our lister card information available to the public online, which would provide a real service to not just local residents, but anyone who needs that information. So Franco, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this with you. I know that it's that's a regular meeting and you don't, I don't want to take up too much of your time. I have provided a proposal for the services already. I can dive into demonstrating what the online GIs service that that you referred to is, or we can start, I can answer questions you may have on the proposal. What's your pleasure? How do you want me to proceed?
So the, there's a copy of the proposal in your, in your packet. Yeah, I think yeah, I think you should just continue on with your, your standard presentation. And we'll have questions come up during the process. One of the things that when we talk about this report board meeting is a good place to look at what these services are in the production environment. Is some of our neighboring towns use it. So Morrisville is using it and frankly, I believe quite a number of other.
Hyde Park, I know this, isn't even.
Yeah, I can show you a list of that's my screen doesn't seem to be coming through.
81.
Start up the restarters.
Yeah. There we go. So what you're looking at here is the, is the list of all of the municipalities that are currently utilizing this service. We serve 650 or so municipalities. Of those, 445 are using this service that I'm showing you tonight. In Vermont, there are currently 60. All under, well, a couple of them are under contract, haven't been built yet, you'll see coming soon. But this is a list of, of all of the Vermont communities that are currently using this service.
Johnson and Hyde Park, he Morrisville.
Hardwick. Let's see what else is. There were just several towns nearby, but also towns as far north as Newport, Newport City, Newport Town.
So Elmore is using.
Elmore is, yeah.
Everybody but us.
Eventually, I mean, it's, it's, we're, we're building a lot of them, we're signing these contracts all the time. It's where the technology is going, it's where we, you know, the municipalities need to take advantage of the technology. They've had been taking advantage of mapping for a long time. Now you can really utilize that and disseminate information. That's the real goal of the GIS is geographic information system is really to be able to disseminate information, provide data. Especially, it's especially supported by the states because when, when COVID hit, because it allows access to data without having to come to the office to, to get those data. And this application in particular, you can make whatever data you want available. So I happen to have Morris Town open already, but I can go to any town you want. They're all the same, they'll look the same, they just have different data. You want me to dive in and start showing it or?
Yeah, yeah, let's do it.
Okay, I'll hit the highlights, I won't get into the nitty gritty because it would take us an hour plus to do that. So first obvious thing is search, so you can search by owner name, by street address, or by parcel ID. Most people aren't going to know parcel IDs, they'll find by street address or owner name. We are, by the way, we're live on the sites, I don't have anything canned for you, so we're this, we're actually going to, in this case, the Morris Town site to look at the data that they are making available to the public. Now, some towns already also have staff sites where there's data that's only available to staff and functionality. And some have, have just a public site. So unless you want me to look something up, I know there's a Smith somewhere.
Look at that.
Wouldn't that be funny if it wasn't? So let's, I type Smith, so it's going to look up anything that might be on Smith Road, or the owner would be Smith. And that's, it provides that list, and the more I type in, the more that list will be reduced. But in the interest of time, let's just say, yeah, this is the one I was looking for. It zooms to that property. Or it doesn't matter, we can go to any of them. So that happens to be one. If you've got photos in your, in your assessment database, I think you do here, right? They would be, you can show them there, you don't have to, but most towns do. There's data linked to it, so there's a CAI property card, that's a simple report. Particularly in Morristown, they don't have a lot of data on that because they really use the Memric property record cards, but it has limited information shown there. This is the Memric web data property card, so they use Memric's web service to host all their property record cards, they have access to it. So rather than hosting the cards here, then we have a direct link to the Memric site. We work with them, we share data back and forth. There's no additional cost to either, from either of us to the community for that connectivity. We just share the data so we can link back and forth. And you can see the, you know, the property record card. I don't recall, do you use Memric's web service right now? You do, okay, so that's what yours would be looked like, you wouldn't have to do that, but you could do that. You could host the actual property record cards, like sometimes. But I think this is a really cost-effective service, it's a good use of that connection. So it shows that information. And you can show other data in, in, in Morristown. They actually have their tax bills posted as well. Different communities post different things.
Are you, is that legal to do that?
Well, it's redacted, it's got the, yeah, it's their redacted tax. So other communities might post the surveys, I could take you to sites, I gotta, unless you want to see it, I, I won't do it now, but I'm happy to do it if you want me to. But they might post the survey of the property, so you can click on and see the survey of that property. Some towns will post building permits, particularly towns that if, if, if a community is using a permitting system, computerized permitting system, we would link right into that system, similar to what I just did with the, the Memric site. We can consume data from those permitting systems, but most meeting, small com, most small communities don't, those permitting systems are expensive and a lot of them still use a paper process for their permits. So they use, they simply scan the documents and link them to the, to the parcels themselves. In fact, I think the proposal I gave you includes a document update tool that will allow you to link whatever documents you want to the site.
So the, the data, you're, you're connected with Memric, so that data is automatic. But other things like the lister card and so forth, for us to maintain it, we would have this upload tool.
Yeah, so, well, with the, the lister cards, I think that that service you're using from Memric, that web service, that's really a better solution for that, it would alleviate your need to maintain the lister cards. Okay? But if you went with the lister cards, then we would have to build a batch uploader. Oh, well, we wouldn't have to, you could give us the cards every year as part of this service, and we would upload them for you at no extra charge.
Or we could do it.
Or if we gave, or if we built you a batch uploader, there's a one-time fee for that batch uploader, and you could do it as many times as you want.
But the information is already there in memory, and you're uploading it every year as you make changes, so it's kind of redundant to do that.
Yeah, and it, and it really, this, the Memric service, especially for the cost, I think it alleviates a lot of pressure trying to maintain it yourself, just staying on top of it, remembering it. It's a, I think it's a good service and it's a good connection.
What about, so they're supposed to be going to another program, aren't you, to stay?
Not Vermont High?
I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, so we were, yep, so we work very closely, we work closely with the developers of that, at the state art, in other states. We've been in communication with them, and they have confirmed multiple times that that the, the process we built to, to do all that kind of work won't change. They're going to build the processes on there to make sure there's a smooth connection, so there should be no impact. Actually, there'll be an impact, it'll be a much smoother process because it's a much more advanced, modern system. But, but it, but it shouldn't, there should be no impact on our, on this connectivity, this connection. Can we move on?
Yep.
One of the next, the next big tools that are used is the Butters List. So I'm not sure, I don't recall what a Butters List here is, but typically it's direct to Butters, when you're trying to come up with a Butters List. Our tool, you put in a zero, and you hit select. And now you see all, you've selected all the Butters. Now typically a butter means across the road as well, so we have this add remove tool. And I want to add that one and add that one. Now I've got all the Butters, I want a Butters List. Gives me the subject parcel, all the Butters. I want mailing labels, start printing the labels here because my sheet started. And I've got my mailing labels. So it's literally seconds you've got that done, which in some cases could take hours if you're using hard copy maps, trying to figure out who it is and what it is.
It does take me hours.
Yeah, particularly if it's on multiple maps. Yeah, so this, in a GIS, because it's one composite, there's, there's no such thing as a map limit, right? So it's, it's, it can search across maps, it doesn't matter. Okay, so again, very quickly, that's the Butters List. You can print that, that map you're looking at there, I'll, I'll wait to show you the print tool in other ways because I'll just be redundant, wasting time doing that. Let me trash this out. The next thing I want to show you briefly is layers. Now, these happen to be the layers that Morristown has. You may have all these layers, you may have more, you may have less. It, there's, it doesn't impact your costs, whatever layers you want to show are what we will show, as long as the data exists. Part of the setup of the services, we would, we would see what VCGI has, Vermont Center Geographic Information has, what what the state might have, what you might have locally, the Regional Planning Commission. We'll put that stuff together and we'll, you decide, or whomever is designated decides what layers you want to include. So, and I'll show you, it's just as simple as a click of a button to show the layer. I click on a flood map because that's a very common one and valuable one, and there's nothing there, but let me zoom up to the extent and then zoom back into some floodplain area. So now you're looking at parcels, you can see how the floodplain affects specific parcels. While I'm showing this, I'm going to show you another very simple to use, and you'll see as, hopefully you're noticing, it's just point and click. You don't have to know any, this is open to the public. The last thing you want to do is have to train the public how to use it. It's point and click, very simple to use, once you just start clicking buttons. But I'm going to show you the measure tool, very simple to use, so I want to figure out, okay, how much of this property is in the floodplain? So I'm, I'm not going to be very careful about this. But if I go like this, you'll see 0.38 of that 0.5 acres is in the floodplain, well, based on what I clicked on there. Point and click, it does all the calculations in the background. Okay? You can have other layers on, you can have multiple layers on it at the same time, so if I want to turn on my zoning, I can turn up, man, that's ugly zoning. I'm glad I didn't build that map. But that's what the town has for, for zoning maps, and you can see, I can drill down here and see what those things mean. But also I can print this, right? So when I, when I print this, I can just do a quick map, just like throwing it on a photo copier. A quick print of, of the sheet. Or I can drill down and say I want to do a little more detail, I can put any, whatever scale I want, I can put in whatever map title I want, and then I can include a legend. So now when I print that map, it'll take a few seconds longer, but it's preparing a professional map with a border, a north arrow, and a town's logo, and the the scale and the legend. So you'll see now, I print that. And here it is, what I was looking at, and you see the legend is showing what all those symbols mean. So you've got a professional map that you can distribute. You can print hard copy, you can make, print it to PDF, email it, whatever, whatever works for whatever your purpose is. When I'm, I'm gonna move it on quickly, please stop me whenever you want. Another thing I want to show is this, I'll turn this off so we can see it. Because we're an Esri business partner, all of this Esri imagery is available. There's also local imagery, that would be the state imagery that they do periodically. That would be in the background. If you happen to have a project where you did imagery for, for whatever, a bridge project, or whatever it might be, we could also include that. I'm going to go to, well, just, I can do the state imagery. Then you can see how, how it lines up. I tend to go here because the imagery is the best. You see how much clearer that is. But now I can very easily with a click of a button, see how, see the properties with the imagery in the background. So I can point out some things that I can see, maybe some things where the maps need to be adjusted or fixed, and as part of our regular maintenance service, we fix those areas as we incorporate new data. But you can see it's just extremely valuable to be able to see all that for all, for all departments. Really, this isn't, I know the listeners are really, would like to have this, but really all departments, you're, you're planning and zoning, conservation. Every single department, emergency services, you don't have water, keep water here. You don't have water.
I don't know.
So those are, there's, there's a ton of base maps. The great thing about the Esri imagery is I can hover over that and I can see the actual data of the imagery that I've turned on there. You can't do that with a specific date with like Google, unless you subscribe to Google's image services, which are very expensive, most towns don't want to pay for that. It's not that important to them. Okay? Well, I'm going to show you just a couple of more things. So if I have, let's just say I have a soils map on. Now I want, I'm talking to someone, I want someone to see exactly what I'm looking at, we have this shared tool. So I copy that. You see that's copying. I go into my email, I compose an email and and the Cur test. I paste that in, and I email that to Cur, and sometime when you got nothing to do, you click on that, and you'll open the site to exactly what I'm looking at here. Okay, same layers on, the same map extents, everything, it's good communication tool. So you're looking at what?
Your email was just still up there.
Oh, sorry about that. I hope there's nothing embarrassing. So again, you can, that's a great communication tool. This in I button is you can hover over and see who owns without clicking and drilling down. You can see a lot of towns and, you know, used to have names on their maps and stuff, they're expensive to maintain. It's really kind of an old approach. This gives it to you, it's on your fingertips, there's no need to do things like that.
From a practical standpoint, how often does, if a, if a property sells, there's a new owner?
Great question. One of the, one of the great things about this tool is that we, you, we install a data processor, we call it data processor locally. Right? So every time, the, the lister's responsible for updating the Kama and all this stuff. So every time they make changes, they run the data processor. So it can be, and it takes, it takes a few minutes, you know? So any, you know, most towns, the, the, the listers will process transfers like once a month or something, some do it weekly. It doesn't matter, you can run it every day, you can run it every week, you can run it every month, so it'll be as current as the last time. So for example, I can show you in Morristown, the last time they ran it was April 13th. Okay? So, and other towns will do it more often, some other towns will do it less often, it's, it's, it's really entirely up to you on how current that is. Now, keep in mind what it's doing all year when you're keeping that updated, because you want current names when you're doing a Butters List and all that kind of stuff, right? So there, it's updating owner's name, address, I think deep reference, that, that kind of stuff. Any of the working values, all that stuff you're doing that you're working, new lots and all that stuff that aren't valid until the following year's grant list is lodged, none of that gets updated. You have to actively tell it, all right, check this box, now update everything. So you can't do it by mistake, you have to be telling it to update it. So you don't have to worry about releasing data that you aren't ready to release.
Now this processor, this local processor, is that, is the, it's software interface?
Yeah, so it's, you, there'll be an icon around the desktop, you execute it, goes out, it runs it, creates the report, you place that report where the, where the GIS can see it, and then you're done. It's, literally takes a minute. Well, depending on how big the community is, and this is not a big community, it may take it a minute to run, but you're, you're talking minutes, not, not even a quarter of an hour.
I was thinking more of the, the physical interface, so you're, you're typing in a new owner's name.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that, nothing, you don't do any of that here. You, with, that data processor is built in a manner that the listers do exactly what they've always been doing. The only difference is run that, execute that data process.
Okay. What about surveys? Do you get them from the state?
No, we've been asked that many times, to be honest with you, I just got communication from the state, we're doing, we're, we're checking to see, we don't have confidence that they're all getting there. So I've got now from, from this year's updates, many communities where we know we have a copy of every survey from the last year. So I haven't done it yet, I just had communication last week with the state, we're going to go into those and see if they're all there. So right now, as far as getting the surveys, they're either mailed hard copies to us by our clients, or if you scan it, if you have facilities to scan it, or scan it with an app on your phone, they're emailing to us. So we get probably half and half hard copy versus digital.
So I heard that the surveyors have to send a copy to the state.
Yep, so did I. I'm not saying it's not happening, I have, I get, up, up until now, I haven't had confidence that it's happening. I'm going to truth that out in the next couple of weeks.
So we still have to scan them and send it to?
For right now, yeah, I, I, if you want me to rely on what's going to the state, that's fine, I just wouldn't do it until I truth that out.
Okay.
Okay, so, any more questions? Over here on the right, there's, you know, zoom in and zoom out tools, I don't need to go into that with you. What else do I want to, there's the street view, I don't know if you if you use that at all, it's built right into the site, so you don't have to leave the, you know, you stay grounded with the site and where you are. This is just Google Street View that's been incorporated, and you can see the arrow as I go up the street, it moves up the street. And as I turn to see what direction I'm looking, you see that arrow turning. So that's built into the site. I showed you the printed.
Is that all Google data then?
Yep, yeah, there's Bing there too, I don't know who uses Bing. I don't know if Bing exists for the, yeah, there's Bing there. I never seen anybody who really uses, Bing is Microsoft's version of, of Street View, everybody's familiar with it. There's definitely no birds eye view in that area. You see down here the coordinates are changing, and one of the things before, I, I've just really scratched the surface, and again, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but an important item is this help. So there's a document, there's documentation here. So if I can't remember how to do a Butters List, I click on it, goes right to there, and explains it on how to do from the Butters List. Okay? That could be printed out, or you can just use it interactively like this. Also, under Help, there's a feature tour, and it'll take you through each tool. Start here for a search, you can search properties, and it goes step by step through all the features. Feedback, that's great, that's another great communication tool. If there's a map issue or a map problem, or stuck on something and can't figure something out, and you don't want to close it and just open it back up, you, you have, there's a way to, just the feedback, it goes directly to our support staff and supporting this all the time. There are other tools that I can get into, but again, I don't want to drag this out. Want me to show more?
So the, the support staff, is that, is that locally pure office or?
Yeah, well, there, we do have some remote staff, and we have staff in Vermont that works remotely, we've got staff in Nathan that works remotely. I got one guy in Alaska, I'm in Alaska, in, in I got one guy in Alaska, um, Alaska, in, uh, in, uh, Washington. That works remotely, but it's all our full-time staff. That you'd be working, that you'd be communicating.
This is a company itself. It is, it's a local company in Littleton?
Littleton, yeah.
So it's not part of a?
No, I get solicited all the time, but it's not. Uh, no, yeah, everything is built, all these tools are built by our full-time staff. We don't subcontract any of the programming or anything like that. We, so I would say, uh, we have twenty-five staff members and about half of them are in Littleton. Uh, we've got, uh, three in Vermont. Another three in New Hampshire remotely, uh, four in Maine, so they're just but we're in Little, we're close by, yeah. And we serve more than half of the towns in Vermont are mapping clients. And as I showed you on the list, sixty was it, are, are, are our mapping clients and using this stuff. Which is what I proposed to you.
What about security? I mean, listeners would have access to put stuff in there. What about anybody else?
Yeah, no, so it's important to know that, uh, well, this is all hosted on Amazon, all of our, the application and all the, all the data. Uh, but they're not, the, it's not using your source data, right? It's using the extract of your source data. So there's no access to your data, uh, in that manner. And nobody can get in and change anything. It's not, nothing.
That'd be a nightmare.
Yeah. But we've never had an issue. We've never had an issue with it going down or anything like that. It's been, uh, Amazon Web Services have been a really good partner. And anything, anything that isn't, virtually everything is public information as you, you know, but not everything is. For example, those taxes, parts of the tax. So, um, you're gonna have, your, your proposal includes a staff site uh, because you wanted the document upload tool. And you don't want the public to have access to the document upload tool. Who knows what you get uploaded? Um, but the, uh, but the staff site also allows you to have layers of data over here that you may want for local staff, you know, password protected only. It also includes some tools that aren't available to the public uh, that are very committed to this. For example, downloading the data. So someone called you, someone who were calling and say, hey, I want to call, I want to, I want your, your, your map, your G I, G I shape plans. You want to share, you can download direct, you'll be able to download directly from your staff site with push of a button and email that to them. And the other thing is I showed you the butters list. On a staff site, you can do a buffer of a feature. So for example, if I wanted this to have the flood map on and I wanted to know everybody within this flood zone, you could then, just like you do for a butters, you could select that and do, uh, give, get a complete list of everybody that's within that. Or you may want, uh, because you have, uh, you, you will have a staff site, there's drawing tools here. Uh, this is the public site, but if you did this on a staff site and you drew this line down the street. I have that. Now on the staff site, you could select that line and say, give me everybody within a hundred feet of that line. So I have everybody on East High Street. You could do that by querying over here, right? Search everybody on East High Street, but it's looking up addresses. So somebody who's on the corner of East High and Winter, they may have a Winter Street address. It won't come up on your list. So that's one, what easy way of doing it. You could do it that way and just use that add remove tool that I showed you and then include the one that's on Winter too. It's a very, um, uh, what was it, versatile tool.
So you said you can link surveys to the properties. What about property transfer returns? Are those linked or is it just?
You, you can literally link anything you want, right?
Documents, zoning?
Yep, you can, you can scan the PDF and you link the tool or I can link anything you want. They allow you to create, let me, um, I don't want to, again, I don't want to take too much time, but.
I'm just wondering if it can, you know, if it's one like source that people who in real estate and lawyers and stuff could find out about a property that one clicks.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that reduces a lot of your local traffic in your office and requests. Because, uh, this, this will get used by realtors and bankers and lawyers law.
And is there a charge if they print it or is they just allowed to?
I use this all the time.
Yeah.
Cause I can title searches for a real estate person and you only pay for the deed, but just the deed, but not?
No, for no, on our site there, we don't have a charging payment mechanism. So if you do it, I mean, there's other sites that you might want to, you may not want to, if, if you're worried about revenues from that, most towns get, you know, they don't get enough revenue to to offset the effort of having to do that stuff. But if you, if you, you're worried about revenues from deed copies and things like that, that's a different site. We don't, we aren't, we aren't set up for that.
Right, so everything on your site would be free that they can access?
That's right, that's right. Uh, I came to, I'm showing, uh, Littleton here just because to give you an idea of things that they're using it for. Now, they're much more mature. They've had it for several years. So this didn't happen overnight. But you can see here, they've got building photos, they've got their property cards, they've got their building permits, they've got their plans. And so then that's how they're doing it, the document upload tool. They get a plan, they just link it to the appropriate property. And you can link it to multiple properties because sometimes a plan will be for multiple properties. But essentially you can literally put anything you want. We used to do a demo and, and, you know, just put a, you know, funny picture up there just to show you. It doesn't matter what it is. But it does matter that it's not available to public because you don't want the public or worse. You want me to show more or do you, or do you have any questions about the proposal itself?
I think probably the listeners.
I have one question. I see you probably wanted to go into the end of the room. Are you changing the acreage in all those parcels?
Um, the, the prop, right now, in, in Walcott, I, I don't remember your maps off the top of my head. They're going to be what you have now. Okay, that's going to be the same thing. When we, when we do mapping, we go to the edge of the road typically. And so if a survey goes to the center of the road, we deduct that portion. That's it. And in fact, Morris Town is, is one town that, we did a wholesale project many years ago because when they were originally mapped, all the property lines went to the center of the road. And so did all their acreages. And they didn't want to tax for the, for the road. So, uh, we went through a process of deducting all of those acreages. The, the portions that are, were in the road so that the acreage represented is to the edge of the right of way.
Is that what you're gonna do to our town? We're gonna lose a lot of acreage if you do that.
Yeah, we're not gonna do anything like that unless you ask us to do it. That was a project that Morris Town was willing to pay. Right now, it's gonna be whatever you've got now. That's what you're gonna continue to have unless or until you have us changing.
So Tom, even on, uh, survey on Route fifteen shows to the center of the road?
Well, getting into a serious mess if you start deducting. There's a lot of deeds that go to the center of the road, a lot that don't. Just keep them, have to come in and not just make a blanket you know, decision. That's not right.
So maybe could, could talk a little bit about the, the proposal and the process and
Sure.
What did it take to get started on all of those details?
Yep. Yeah, so the, the, getting set up, setting up the data for the access GIS and that service are pretty straightforward. Uh, however, there is a first step that has to take place in Walcott. We've got to reformat the, the, the data to make, to facilitate this and also to facilitate ongoing maintenance. And when I say reformat, it has nothing to do with remapping or changing the lines or anything like that. It's simply how the digital data are structured uh, so that the application can glean what it needs efficiently. And it can be maintained efficiently. So the first part of the proposal is to in fact do that conversion. Uh, I think it was four, forty-five hundred dollars. That was a one-time cost for that. Then the second part of that service is to do an update because the maps were last updated to April one of twenty twenty. So as part of this project, we would deliver you data, uh, current to April one of twenty twenty-two. So there's two thousand dollars, but that's regular updating that you would normally do anyways for that. Um, so that forty-five hundred dollars is a one-time cost. You don't face it again. That tax map maintenance cost is an annual cost, but it's not two thousand dollars a year. It's probably someone seeing a thousand dollars a year for the town of Walcott. This just happens to be two years of update. Then there's a
Updating from both?
Uh, your existing maps are current to April first of twenty twenty. So we'll get the cert, anything that's been recorded since April first of twenty twenty through March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two, as well as deal with mapping questions and problems that have come up that you need us to fix or correct. That's what that tax map maintenance portion of the proposal is. And delivering hard copy maps as well. That's one thing important to know that we're, this, this service, I, I don't recommend just ditching hard copy maps entirely. Cause you're gonna still need them from time to time. Some people won't make the leap to GIS. You need to be able to provide that with maps they're used to getting. Uh, otherwise, people would be throwing grenades over the fence all the time because they couldn't get what they could get before. So our goal is to meet the needs you had before, but to take advantage of the technology as well. Then there's a one-time setup fee for this access GIS service, which is three thousand dollars. And a one-time setup fee for the site, for the staff site implementation. Uh, that's, that's discounted from nine fifty if we do it at the beginning when we do the site. So that, that's four hundred and seventy-five dollars. So that, that thirty-four seventy-five is also a one-time fee.
What does that mean staff site?
So the staff site is the portion of your site that requires password protection. So only staff members have access to it. It has your additional tools. You could have data and also has the document upload tool. Again, that's a one-time fee. And then there's the annual, uh, uh, annual, the annual fees are three thousand dollars a year for the, uh, access GIS site and the staff site. And then five hundred dollars a year for the document upload tool. There is no setup fee for the document upload tool. Once the staff site's built, it just works. So, uh, that's just, so, um, uh, so you see the total cost of the project. Something's wrong.
Yeah.
I apologize for that. Total cost of the project is
Twelve, two seventy-five is it?
Thirteen, four, seven, five. So the number at the top, the total cost of this project is correct.
That didn't come down here.
Yeah, somehow that got screwed up. It's not seventeen, two, seven, five. And neither is that four thousand dollar annual fee. It should be thirty-five hundred. So the total cost is thirteen, four, seven, five. That includes your update. And then the ongoing costs are three thousand dollars plus five hundred dollars for document upload tool and whatever update costs are annual maintenance. That needs to be done regardless. Did you kick me out or? That's fine. We may not need it anyways.
And in terms of, uh, that the initial process, assisting data, what kind of timeline is that?
Uh, you mean the convert, the, the conversion of the data? I'm sure I gave you a timeline. Obviously, this can be changed depending on what your specific needs are, but. So the data reformat, uh, within ninety days of a contract. The tax map maintenance would be within forty-five days of receiving the final data to be, do the update. Or, uh, the ninety days. Obviously, we can't do the update until we get the conversion of the data done. So within forty-five days of that date or receiving the data for the update, whichever is later.
So it's ninety days plus forty-five?
Correct. If it takes us the whole ninety days to do it. And then the access GIS service is sixty days from completion of the data reformat. So that, then it'll be up. So you're talking about five months start to finish for all of it, if we use the whole schedule. And if that, you know, we, obviously that can be played with. If we, if you need it sooner, I'm sure we can squeeze more out of that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get at, so from a practical standpoint, this could be available to the public.
Yeah, so normally we, we make it, we, we release it to you. Let you municipal staff look at it, do whatever they decide. I, I didn't really, I didn't really mean to show that, get rid of that or can't we show this too, that kind of stuff. Yeah, so you, you just, you know, review it and that takes as long as you want it to take. We like to have it take thirty days, but people's schedules are people's schedules. So we'll keep it password protected. The public won't even know it exists until we get the go-ahead to release. That's when, uh, we will take the password off and I suggest that's where, when you put links to it on your municipal uh, website. So you have a link maybe from your lister's page from, well, from every page if you want. Or I don't know if you have a, I don't know your website too well. You may have a yes, for that in particular, so. But it'll be up and not, uh, but even though it's there, no one will know how to, you know, no one will find it until, until you start publishing.
Right.
And besides, it'll be password protected until you tell us not to.
Is there any overlap on, uh, the, the service that you have?
Cofile? Well, they have their own, here hopefully in the clouds. Um, you've heard of GOV or Cofile and some land records?
Yeah.
And that's what we use.
Yeah.
And we put a link on our website for them to be able to access that. It goes through Cofiles site and, uh, and then they buy the deeds and stuff.
Yeah, so we can have a link to that site on access GIS too, you'll wonder where those links are. And they could link to that and that's where, but that's where they do the interaction of getting the deeds and making the payments and all that stuff. We could, we could have a direct link to that. Assuming they allow it, I don't know.
I've never seen that go with other towns. It's always separated. You go into the town clerk's, town clerk's, um, site and for the land deeds and then go into the listers for, um, this and for tax maps.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to think. There's one town in Vermont that we tried to do it with. They, it's not with, with They, it's not with, with.
Is it with COs?
Yes, they wouldn't allow it. They wouldn't allow us to do that link.
It's just.
But, but we do, but we do another, like in Massachusetts, for example, Handen, Massachusetts, there's a direct link to the Handen County Registry. So they, you click on it and it goes right to that deed at the registry, in the registry site, not, it doesn't, it's not on our site. So you don't have to search forward again and all that stuff. We would certainly do something like that if, if we could work that out.
Okay.
That whole pay scheme may, may cause a problem there. So the best we may be able to do is just link to this, get them to the site, and then they'd have to find it again. But I, I don't, I got some really smart people that will solve that problem.
Thank you.
So everything is based online. So is there a server or any equipment that we have to have here?
Nope, nothing. As long as you have internet access, you have, you have access to the data, including on mobile devices and cellphones.
Is a static IP required? With our internet service? No.
I don't, I've never been asked that. I don't understand the technologies like that.
Because it's all in the cloud.
Because nothing's hosted here.
I'm sorry.
There's nothing hosted here.
Right.
There's no need for a server.
Because we do know with the Cofile system, they require a static IP, which.
When they go on the cloud, that'll go away.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good to know. I know how to answer that question next time.
That gives us, gives us difficulty. When we're using our star links.
No questions? I've already used up way more time than you probably wanted to.
It's relative harder. You could save.
Yeah, it's definitely can be a time saver.
Very informative.
You're welcome. I'll, I'll leave you my cards too. If you think of something, I'll give you a call and ask you a question. Feel free to do so or email. Can you shut down?
Yep.
Thank you, Franco. We appreciate your coming back to Wauka. You're getting to know the town pretty well.
You're welcome. I'm happy to do it. You're close. I mean, it's.
Yes. Maybe the next time you go back, we'll have a free new bridge.
Yeah.
We're having a good restaurant in Little.
Chain Thai?
Oh, yeah.
Chain Thai.
I've been there since I came to work for this company before I bought thirty-seven years ago. Me too. I love this. I grew up in Barry. I, I've loved it since then. I know many of those people.
Or if there's other.
Yeah, we sell for most, New Hampshire.
Yeah, yeah, we've got probably at least three quarters of it. Virtually all of it. We're, we're strong in Massachusetts, especially as you're from west to east. You've got a lot more eastern towns, but you were, virtually all of Berkshire County is our, more than some of them. And now we have clients as far away as Sinca, Alaska. The kind that is our, is our client.
Just being a secret airport in the.
Street view.
Street view.
Crazy.
Thank you.
They don't need it.
Very cool. You live in Rossi.
Oh, yeah, I know that.
What's that?
He just said if you go to Barry and throw a rock in, you can hit a Rossi.
Yeah, funny thing, none of them are related to me. I've got two brothers that are still with me. But yeah, I'm not related to any of Rossi's. I don't have any relatives in the United States.
Scott Rossi.
Especially mine, Franco Rossi. You go to Italy, Franco Rossi is like John Smith.
I would like to email Rossi.
All right, thank you. Got some daylight to get on.
A little bit.
Yeah, this time of the year.
All right, appreciate it.
Let me put this back on?
No, that's.
That's fine.
So how do we want to move forward with this? Are you have more questions, concerns, the listeners?
I'm not technically savvy enough to have intelligent questions, but it looks really interesting to me. If it'll, if it'll save a lot of work for you folks and make it more efficient.
It's really going to save a lot of time for me in zoning aspect of maps, especially to your brothers. I spend a lot of time.
And it's a, it's a real service for the public.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, at best, as listers who are available twelve hours a week.
Yeah.
So, you know, clearly, that's not meeting all the needs of the public when they need something. And so they may end up waiting days. You know, if we miss it on Thursday and we're not back in until Tuesday, you know, that's a lot of downtime for professionals who need the information. And so it would be a true service for the public. And yeah, frankly, I think we have to look to the future and realize that listeners may be fading out.
Dying breed.
A dying breed indeed. And so to be able to take advantage of the ARPA funds and get this on the ground and running now, to me, is definitely the way to go.
That's a good endorsement for me, you know. You know, it sounds like it's nothing but a positive thing.
Yeah, I really don't see any cons to it, other than the cost.
Well, we have this one-time opportunity, and I think that's what the ARPA funds were meant for, to put things in place for the public.
I'm gonna say that's a one-time fee too.
Yeah, and I also want to point out, since COVID, there's a lot more activity with parcels changing hands quickly. And, you know, if you can update quicker than a year.
Yeah, that was really good to hear.
I figured that would be.
Yeah, I, I do think this fits squarely in our sweet spot with ARPA. This is exactly what the funds are for.
And I do, I don't use all the detail, but I use it. You know, I could get a test, I need, you know, deeds, tax bill, and lister's card. And I can sit at home, not waste gas, just download it and have it done in five minutes, which is nice.
I'd like to propose that we move forward with this opportunity.
I don't know what I'm talking about, but I'll second that one. Because it sounds good. It sounds efficient.
Any other comments, discussions on this? Not then, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to post? So Carrie. It's gonna take a while, but.
Yeah, you won't see it for a few minutes.
Now, when you guys retire, you can retire with peace.
We won't be able to start until we finish the grand list and get that done for the year.
Oh, he might just be just waiting like this minute. Did he send any contract or we just reach out to him?
No, I, yeah, just the proposal. Next step will be to recap.
What about putting the surveys and permits on there?
Well, let's go one step at a time, I guess.
Go one step at a time?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there's a, this, this proposal does include the upload tool. So really, all it is, is a scanner. And, and the scanner depends on how big the documents are.
For survey.
They're going to be big. So I, those scanners, they won't be used that heavily, I don't, I wouldn't think.
Not after the initial upload.
So when I looked in the pricing of those things, they can range from two to ten thousand dollars. But at ten thousand dollars, it's a high-speed, you know, crazy thing.
Can you rent it for a month? I wondered about asking more as well. We could use theirs and just charge us to be.
Well, I would think too, you need to think, if you put the surveys on right now, the town office charges, so you might want to think about doing that through Cofile, which has that access. Everything that goes through this, there's no fee. So what you're, what you're doing is you're saving. You know, people are printing it themselves instead of charging them in the sense.
And I'm assuming they would have to reduce these surveys to print them. Is that what you do when you print those surveys?
I, I don't print surveys.
Oh, okay.
Just the lister's cards. I would think that most people wouldn't have access.
To a big printer.
So maybe it's just viewing.
I mean, they could, I don't know. Okay, so let's move on to the street naming ordinance. Everyone, there's comments in here from the E911 coordinator that we need to go through. We asked for comments. I had also asked Kirk to go and check out Elmore. Were you able to do that?
Yeah, they're basically done the same thing as here. They're not doing anything different. It's, it's just a post that will pull high with the numbers going down.
So the post is four B?
Right. It's a four by four pressure tree. So probably it's a six, or it's two forty to the ground. They're just numbers going down on the roadside. I think I noticed a few of those. They seem to show up pretty well. The numbers are reflected, so probably much of them show up very slightly in the black.
So I do type up a new ordinance so that we could sign it tonight because we received these comments and we were still having further discussion and it kind of seemed a waste of paper. So I made you a new, another copy of what we discussed last week. We didn't make any decisions on them. But I wondered if Dan could go over for E911 some of the, the issues that the board needs to consider as we're making these changes.
Well, thanks for asking for input. There were just a couple of things I noticed again that I would bring up because Tom and I have also got access to the state 911 board proposed changes to their standards. It's still in graph form right now, but we were able to check those out. And so any comments I have here are based on my viewing of that. The proposed language from the DRB left out a couple of words from the state standard. And so I thought that might be a little deceptive. And so in section four B, a driveway having one or two addresses on it may be defined as either a driveway or as a private road. I just thought that was a little more clear to include that language. And then I guess my issue is, and you know, Linda.
Can you go, can you go back? Because I couldn't find where that exactly goes. Four B is in here. Is it ours or is it the?
Of the proposed 911 standards.
Oh, that's why I couldn't find it. And where would you like to put it in our ordinance?
Well, I don't have that from your.
Oh.
Yeah, that's, okay, thanks. Yeah, in that blue section.
Yeah.
So it says a shared access having two or more addresses may be defined as a private road. But the state standards say defined as either a driveway or as a private road. And so I thought that was not being completely clear if we wish to be in compliance with the state standards, which I think is how that was brought up at the last meeting or two meetings ago. Okay, and then I, well, yeah, I was going to say, Linda, certainly you're well aware of how statute or how legislation, how laws are drafted or crafted. As a lawyer, I certainly spent a lot of time reading statutes and laws and interpreting them. And to me, the goal always is to have the language as clear as possible so that, you know, an average person can understand it and hopefully be in compliance. And I just noted that the DRB proposed language adds a condition if approved by the Development Review Board as a private road as part of the plat review process. And at that point, you know, as a 911 coordinator or as a citizen, that's a total breakdown for me because now I'm lost. And I guess I would have to know something about the Development Review Board or the plat review process. I think to understand that statement, I would have to then go to the zoning bylaws and find that. And to me, that's where clarity breaks down. And in addition, I think that, you know, pulling a clause out of the zoning bylaws and including it in a town ordinance, this kind of picking and choosing, you know, a zoning rule or regulation and elevating it to a higher standard that a town ordinance carries over zoning bylaws. I just didn't think it appropriate to isolate and elevate a discretionary section of the bylaws to give it that greater strength and stats. But yeah, that's all I have to say about that because I don't understand what it means. But then in your section two on street naming in the proposed ordinance, it said private roads shall be named. I was, you know, just as a, well, I don't know, either as a 911 coordinator or as a citizen, I was unclear. I was unclear as to who would initiate the naming of the private road, whether a road name would be provided if the residents on that road requested or if that would be the town automatically initiating the process.
So what I think happened here is that it was part of the original ordinance and it would have come right before the blue section. And it would refer to up above where the select board would name it, but because it was added, it kind of got separated. I wondered if the private road should be up at the top, you know, closer to each street or road should be assigned a name by the select board.
Yeah, I think that would help if it leaves a name by the-
Yeah, I think it'd get isolated.
It's hanging out there by itself.
Right.
In section three. Oh, oh, yeah, Tom and I had talked about this. Where it says odd numbers are on the left, even on the right. And in checking the state standards, they're using the language odd numbers on one side, even on the other side. And I just think that's a safer phrasing. We could potentially have a situation where it would be arguable whether the odd numbers are on the left or the right, depending on, I guess, which way you're approaching it.
Where you're driving.
And so rather than, you know, getting hung up on something where addresses could potentially have to be changed in the future, it's just safer to say that, you know, what we obviously currently do is have odd and even numbers on opposite sides of the street.
Yeah, I think this was probably written when it was originally started. And now it's already set, so you're just continuing, I was trying to think of the continuity, but there already is continuity because it's already taking place.
I think when it started, I mean, when you start like one, two, three going up, that's the break?
Yeah, I know, but I mean-
If you go the other way, everything was based off from the post office.
Yeah, we don't want to get them confused.
No, no, that's, that's the way it was started.
Yeah, I know, I know.
You went from the post office, one direction, and then it went the other way towards Harvard. So this was the way it was set. And that's why it was set that way.
Does it say right here left, huh?
It was originally, and I'm talking probably twenty five years ago. That's the way the state suggested to do it twenty five years ago.
It's kind of a moot point because you're all numbered, because that's-
So that's what I said, this was probably written in the very beginning, now it is a moot point because it's already set. So I don't know, I, I think that language is fine, your suggestion.
And under four, paragraph two, which says within sixty days after getting the number, then owner has to put a number on the front door of their house. I thought that might, that could be eliminated, to my knowledge, this hasn't been enforced, I don't know how it would be enforced. And it wouldn't be relevant if at some point the town does choose to go forward with townwide nine one one numbers.
So every ordinance has to either be designated a civil or, what's the other one?
Traditionally.
No, civil or this two, there has to be penalties by law in an ordinance. Something to make it enforceable, or you should not even have an ordinance, you could just have a policy. So I, I think the wording on the face of, of the building, but I mean, we have some, I'm not gonna name names, but we do have someone in town who has refused to, you know, put up, you know, traditional type signs and, and stuff. And I think we need something in case someone refuses to allow a number be put up. But I think the wording is wrong.
Well, otherwise, I would think that, you know, once the nine one one coordinators notify a homeowner of their number, then in sixty days, we'd have to go see if they had a number up or, but um, yeah, and we have not-
There's gotta be a penalty. And what the heck would anyone refuse to do this for their own health and safety?
Some people prefer, people didn't know where they lived or, you know, yeah, it's a lot of, you know, they come here for a reason, in the backwoods and-
Well, if they're fugitive, they can go find someplace more than home.
I don't know, I think it needs rewording. But there has to be some sort of something in there in case someone refuses the number to be put up. I don't think it needs to necessarily be on the house or so forth.
Linda, you mean civil or criminal?
Yes, I couldn't think of that was, they'd be designated as civil or criminal. Ordinance for penalties.
And then, otherwise, paragraph three refers to the size of the letters as being not less than three inches. And I noted that the nine one one signs that we have been purchasing and providing those who request, the numbers are two and a half inches high and one and a quarter inch wide. And so assuming we would have a maximum of four digits in an address, all of those, all four digits of that dimension would fit on a sign that's twelve inches long. I noted in the proposed nine one ones, you know, state standards, they suggest digits that are three and a half inches high and two and a half inches wide and so for a four digit address, that would require a sixteen inch sign, which does not seem workable.
That's what we're using now?
Yes.
That looks perfectly visible.
And so, yeah, Tyler-
And if bigger, it looks stupid, I think.
Well, yeah, and, you know, Kurt, as you're saying, it's a four foot post, you know, above the ground, you know? And so in my discussion with Tyler at the state, I said, well, you know, if, for example, there were a sixteen inch sign and you put that on a four foot post and like you were saying, it snows, you know, you're gonna see the first, you know, two digits or something.
These can be located on the side, visible side of the house.
Well, Elmore, for example, every address has that four foot post with the vertical sign on it.
Oh, wow.
At the driveway.
My house is right near the road, so I wonder, still has to have a four foot.
Because it's absolutely consistent.
Yeah.
And so that's the way they went. But Tyler's response to me was, oh, it's just a suggestion.
Crash break, crash break was on the buildings.
Right.
Or red, red white, front piece of the building.
Well, but that's not gonna work for many, 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 many roads.
No.
So those were just my thoughts and I appreciate your happiness.
I mean, it can take a young road up here on this east hill. They're about a mile down the road, so if it's on the house, I know, I understand that.
I was just thinking that the house is right line, right near the, right visible.
Well, no, these says, this is it. Okay, because they don't want anyone to deviate. I wouldn't say that.
Talk to your own person there.
He's a rebel.
No, it's just, they're saying it's-
It's inconsistent, yeah.
It is consistent, the fire department, the ambulance.
I'll give great a spoon, I'm sorry.
So, so we have many questions here before we adopt this. I think we need to decide whether we have any interest in putting up E nine one one signs as part of our money or not. Because a lot of the wording in this ordinance discusses houses, putting signs on houses and mailboxes and so forth, so I think that's a decision that we'd need to come forward when we approve this. So what are, what is the board's thoughts on that? How are they feeling about that? We don't have a price in front of us.
I'll have to research that, but-
Well, how much do each of those signs cost?
Is that something that the board wants? I mean, it's easy enough to figure out how many addresses we have in town. And we know how much a sign costs and how much a post, so we could have that figured to your next meeting. Is that something you wanna wait? But I, I don't wanna keep pushing this adoption off and writing this, so I would like to know if people are leaning in favor on doing that or not. I know you wanna wait for the price, but tell me how you wanna move forward with this.
Can I be installed, in an installed place?
Yeah, we could, we could price out the whole project. But my personal feeling is this is another good. As, as I mentioned in our last meeting, our survey did not rate this very high. But I think as before is putting in the structure for the town to grow.
The topic is, I think, our responsibility to look after the health and welfare of our citizens too. And I think this would fall within that category. They, they might not feel it's important right now. But if they need an ambulance sometime and someone can't find them, then they would. And we're also, you know, monies that we might have spent on our two, on our bridges, the savings, you know, that we don't need put towards that infrastructure would be good. You know, to look at the art of plans.
I guess the key thing here is some concern about consistent placement. And I understand for inclement weather and emergency situations, people are trying to respond. They don't wanna be guessing with a sign. But-
Is it in our town plan? Do we totally comply with nine one one? I just didn't know.
The other thing is I have some concern, how can we enforce? You know, I don't, I respect everybody's privacy, if somebody wants to live like their own, fine. But they're taking away from themselves if they don't have a nine one one address. I mean-
Now they would have to sign a confidentiality and then we wouldn't be able to do it, correct? Nine one one.
But then they don't get response there, and then they'll complain if something happens and they, nobody else.
But we do have, we do have, we do have one person in town.
Anybody can be found, you go on, Google Maps, and find anybody, you know?
Right, so it couldn't find you.
Very unsettling, yeah, very unsettling, but it's the way it is.
Deb, can you find out, or you might know, that confidentiality agreement still stands? So when it first came out, we do have one person with that.
Yes, I'll check on that.
Okay.
I think it's gonna come down to another issue is being four foot and now you have a sign that's a foot, so anything three foot or more for a snowbank, it's gonna start covering the letters.
Although we can check with Elmore.
So if you're putting it by their mailbox, then in a driveway, they're supposed to keep that clear anyway. I would say that I would, I would try to do it as close to that as possible. I mean, it's happening to every single person, there's always something special there.
I mean, the thing is, in Mooresville and other towns hardly very on failure, if there's a hydrant next to your home, you have to clear it. It's part of their agreement.
You mean the nice places, they don't make you go out and shovel with every time the snow starts to want it, I mean?
They do in those towns.
Oh, I have to go do that every time it gets snowed.
All right, so we're saying we're leaning towards that?
I think posting a sign would be easier than this mailbox doorway, house, next to the driveway, next to the road.
Okay, so at least we know where we're heading or?
I, I mean, I was on the fire department for thirty years. If you didn't know the people in the town, you didn't know where they live, because there was no signs.
And you have a lot more people coming in that are new.
I guess my concern with the diversity that wants that ultimate level of privacy is, I mean, I can understand somebody not being socially, just wanna be a loner, but God sakes, why take away your opportunity to get in emergency services? And again, they, anybody can go on Google Maps and find out where they live anyway. So it's not like the towns to give away their secret list. I don't know if the logic will work, but that's too bad.
All right, I will try to put something together so we can the after one, after we do that, the other thing we need to do is sets, I think, set a policy on street signs, who's paying for it, who's paying for private ones and so forth. We need to have something written in that. Okay, that's all I have on this thing else. You think of anything, give me a call in the next two weeks. Budget managers report.
Okay, so I created a laundry list here of activity. We'll come around in a little bit on the progress of one of our projects, so first we started infrastructure. We did find an individual who is capable of doing the painting and doing the power washing, fixing the gutter, et cetera. I think they misunderstood the job because the quote came out to thirty five thousand dollars.
I know, I would just-
I thought it was thirty.
But I, I do wanna find out, if you look at the garage closely, it isn't, it isn't serious disrepair. And I really wanna keep focusing on this because I think it's really important to get ahead of this, trying to do nothing but cost us more money.
So does that mean you're going to ask them to rebid or?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask them to rebid, plus I only have one bid, I'm gonna go after multiple bidders. It is difficult to find people who do this kind of work.
Is there someone you could separate to if you have a hard time, it might be somebody who does painting? Is there someone you could separate to if you have a hard time? It might be somebody who does painting, but doesn't.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And I'm, you know, I'm asking around uh. Dean seems to know an awful lot of people who do this kind of work, and he's been helpful with that, so. But, but the idea at this point is to do a rebid on this. So um, fuel contracts. This is where the bad thing starts to come. Yeah. So the, our heating oil contract with Born's expired yesterday. And. We had a fixed bid from them at two dollars and fifty nine nine. Uh, for a gallon. And they will not bid on a fixed. Fixed rate anymore because of the volatility in the market, yeah. And so what they're saying is it's going to cost four dollars plus. For heating oil. Um, until the market stabilizes. Which is going to be a big hit, a very big hit. And I think we were talking the other day about uh, you know, where we can use some of our funds for this year. This would be a place that I highly suggest that we go. Uh, because our fuel costs are going to. Go up significantly.
Well, I, I have been talking to Dylan a little bit too. I have a feeling we won't be getting a paving grants. I think we would have heard. I also think we need to consider um. Something has to be done about the North Wicket Road.
Right.
Some of them, um.
Some of them.
He says about a hundred and fifty thousand a mile. And the beginning and the end of the North Hooket Road are just deteriorating horribly.
Right.
You mean to the nice popple cycle by everyday and they're about A Y that.
Small, so.
Just throwing that out. But I'm just, you know, trying to think of somewhere we can do something if we don't get a paving grant.
Okay. So uh. We just have to watch fuel prices. I know that Dylan's being diligent about it. He's trying not to uh. Make as many truck runs, um, et cetera. So uh, everybody's kind of in conservation mode. There's no telling when this is going to come.
What's that known to them? What's the diesel's? The diesel price is going to stay stable? Is that going to go like heating?
Diesel, oh, yeah, diesel will be going up also.
Or is it six something a gallon now?
It's come down to five ninety nine.
Oh, wow.
Next time. Uh, so grant opportunities, there's a new one that came along. It was called Safe Streets and Roads. It's a federal grant, part of the federal infrastructure program. My suggestion is you go ahead and apply for it. Enter.
Do you have to apply for something in particular?
I, well, um, yeah, it's uh.
Yeah, I'm familiar with grant, but do you have a project?
A particular project?
Yeah.
Well, paving might be one of them.
Right. Yep. I didn't know if you. Um, you have to have a specific project in mind. Apply.
Yeah. The application is, now they, they, they just announced this and they're doing a seminar next week online. I think I can answer that question. Basically, this is just an announcement.
Just to keep in the back of your mind, at some point I'm hoping to have some safe walking paths along School Street. Once the bridge is in and they put in a pedestrian sidewalk, so.
Mowing contract, just want to uh. Let you know that our contract with Blais Dell is for one more year. Uh, so June twenty three or something. Um, yeah, he did indicate that he wants to renegotiate. Is that right?
Yeah, well, you know, fuel prices and stuff, and he thought his, that the um. Contract was up and I said, oh. And then I talked to you and we looked it up and it isn't. So I sent it to him and said, uh, we have one more year. I haven't heard any feedback. But we just had a conversation about.
So he wants to add, he wants one?
No, he just uh thought the contract was up and wondered if we were rebidding it for three years, and he did let me know that. On most of his contracts, he is going up twenty five percent. But then I looked it up and it, we're not even doing it.
Is he um uh trimming?
Well, we, we did talk about weed right.
Is he, is he done again?
Yeah, he did yesterday.
He did the outside perimeter of the fence, otherwise Kurt and I.
We did.
We went uh and moved the furniture and everything inside the park. Uh, because otherwise there are dandelions and other weeds growing up through the head around that chairs and it doesn't look like a park. It looks like a wasteland. Well, at least you helped the bees. I was sure we didn't blow ours for the month and it looked like. Well, I planted pollinator flowers now in the fence, so.
We did too.
But we, yeah.
We did it out of the. You know, the stupidity of goodness. Well, I guess somebody needs to go over his help. I mean, it's cleaning up and. Trimming and according to this contract.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, uh, I think he needs to do a better job of it. Uh, I don't know if he just ran out of time. Or what the case is.
Well, he hasn't been able to find any help, so he's been doing it all and so. He did tell me that. He said, nobody wants to work right now.
I don't understand that. I mean, COVID is over the worst of it. So many people can't get help that they need and, and they're paying good money.
Yeah.
Better money than they were before COVID.
Yeah. Okay, so roadside mowing, um. Dylan um that reached out uh to an individual that has their own mower. Um, and. Has put in a bid for town by mowing at nine thousand dollars. Yeah, I think last year. We came close to seven thousand, wasn't it?
Yeah, with uh somebody from our own department. We just rented it out and then whatever trial we gave them.
So the, the seven thousand included his dollar?
Yes, no?
Yes.
But he didn't, was not able to complete the whole town.
Right.
And drove a hundred miles an hour.
And then, and the machine, the rental machine was not the best. Uh, so the quality was poor. And with the price of fuel, it, my guess is that this bid is competitive. So dogs.
So are we looking for more? Are we going to accept it or?
Well, the question is if we can find anybody else, we would look for more. If we can't. And this bid seems reasonable to the board, I think we should move on. And lock them in.
Right, I, I, we had a really hard time finding anybody last year. That's why we ended up doing it.
Is there any. In the contract state that they didn't do to complete the town, would be a deduction? Um, that can be, I, I, there is no, I haven't seen a contract. But there's something like that certainly be put into. I don't want to, like I've been going through five road constructions. One last year started at the end of April and then into November. I don't want to see it go all year.
Yeah.
It should be done within a. Six to ten time frame, hopefully. Yeah, so it isn't back up to here again by the time they're finished at the end. Right, I think we, well, there's a. There is a timing issue. You're, you're absolutely right.
And I'm afraid if they don't start soon, it's going to be over too far.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is take a couple more days to see if we can find anybody else. If not, I, I agree with the urgency. Would want to try to pin this down.
I mean, it sounds like a good price, but just. Larry, that if they're going to take a long period of time, if you wait too long, it's a three foot height and new stuff starts coming up in. It's just going to do another lousy job.
Yeah.
Cutting it.
Depends on the line.
So we'll um. Can we just make a motion that um we will um. Let Kurt uh reach out and try to find uh any other lawyers. If not, go write a contract. He can just email it to us and then we can respond quickly if he want to add anything to it and then he can. Proceed to sign it. As approved. Is that all right?
Sounds good. We need to make a motion right now.
I'll make a motion to that.
I'll send it.
On favor?
I.
Oppose. Go carry.
Okay, dogs, uh, so as of today, uh. We have twenty seven. Unlicensed cars, well. It actually, seventeen individuals, so uh several of these individuals that are multiple dogs. Uh, but there's twenty seven left that are unlicensed. Kind of, you have the list there of those that are unlicensed. There's, there's a, a number of them that I would think would be fairly easy to get going. And then um. Start to whittle it down from there. A letter has gone out to um all of these and it's been. It's had some success, brought it down significantly, uh, but this is now the board's responsibility. With twenty seven dogs.
I have two that are waiting for appointment and I have another one, Ashley Douglas on there who will be coming in tomorrow.
Um, so I think the process needs to be phone calls. And try to beat this thing down.
Yeah. I see several of them are expired, rabies.
Yes, that's my concern.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot of rabies. And there's some, I mean, that are just kind of surprised that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is like, they just need a friendly reminder, I think.
Some of them are dogs about this big too.
Uh, so this is now officially kind of falling off of the board, of the board's per view. And I will initiate these calls. And just keep reporting where we're at. We'll probably end up with a handful that are going to be problems and we'll have to decide what to do with this. Gulf Road Bridge, uh. So. The Gulf Road Bridge is posted at six tons and uh there's a resident in that area that. Is pretty diligent, diligent about uh reporting uh heavy trucks going over the bridge. And um. So we, Dylan, I mean, uh, Lucian. Had indicated that this six ton posting was something that Skip put up. Yeah, is uh. Necessarily correct. Maybe you know the history of this, because I don't.
Do you recall that one now? Because they did not want them to use Gulf Road or heavy trucks.
Yeah. And I don't know if it was ever updated. Um, I know we used to update it, but I didn't update it since here. To have it still restricted, so.
Kurt did, no. In February.
Oh, they did, yes, 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 we did. That's correct.
But um. Does the. And go online and find out, get the bridge inspection for that and see what it says it's been carried?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is there's a way to do this?
Yeah. I was looking for a bridge inspection. What do I want to do? Not bridge, inspections, sorry. Of when it was inspected last and what was the load.
You go right on the agency of transportation and this whole thing and. And looking at all your, so Dylan's supposed to be doing that every year. And printing them off, they're in the cycle and they, they're not mailing them to us anymore. We have to go on and do that.
Okay, good, because I couldn't find any current ones. I was like, what? So I'll go on and look.
Okay, because uh the. Gravels uh. I want to have, have called Dylan and wanted to get permission to use the bridge. You know, they're obviously going over with much, much heavier weights than that.
Yeah.
And so my thought is that if the bridge really has a different rating than what we're opposed to that. We need to know what that rating is and what the inspector says.
Yeah.
And then we can repost it. Does that make sense to you?
Oh, yeah.
But is the restriction for a year or can we lift it at any time?
You get some pretty heavy loads.
We made it up, we can take it down.
Get some pretty heavy loads of all of that from time to time.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of trucks will take that as a shorter route, save them going to Harbican North.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, it makes sense, you know, I know what they're doing. The other thing is that if they're trying to get to North Wicket. There are alternatives to go all the way down to fifteen in North Wicket. Which is a dangerous corner when they're in a big truck.
Nobody likes that anymore. That turn.
No. And we've complained about it, that the data about, I don't see anything happening.
I, nothing's going to happen because it's all on our property. Um, it's a town road and at some point we're going to have to. Get an engineer to redesign that. Connection, because even Bob Vase, he can't make it up there. They're half in the, they're on the other side of the road and half on. Marisha's property, they can't swing it.
And so that's why Gulf Road is used. Which is, and, and the other thing is that the uh. The flood mitigation project is recommended that bridge be replaced also. For a whole different reason.
Yeah.
And they would, they would make it a seventy foot span. Uh, it'll, so it'll be a two-way bridge. That's not going to happen in the next year, so.
Maybe not for a great deal longer than that, the way things are going.
The boiler, the boiler in the garage, uh, the inspector, uh, it was been turned over to. Uh, an inspector, the inspector came over today, uh, disassembled the boiler, literally disassembled it. And uh, he's going to report back to the insurance company on his findings. I, I have no idea where this is going to go. Um, I think a little bit of what I was reading between the lines with the inspector is that he found. The timing of Born's being here doing a cleaning and the fire the next day. Curious, so.
Oh. That's not the one board is to choose. No.
So the first time. So it's fortunate that we're in. So it's fortunate that we're in summer now. We have signed the quote for the propane price and for the overhead heater. But. Until we get a finding from the insurance company, my suggestion is we wait on, I think it's gonna be ten days, two weeks.
I'd wait. I have, there's some fault there.
Yeah, if we just remove it and move forward, we've defaulted, so. That's what that's. Got a request from Dean and Dogs for Justice to ask the town if we would allow for a coin drop. And I know we have a coin drop policy, but I want everybody's thought on. Fire department does this obviously, but this is Dogs for Justice.
I think it's justice for dogs.
So what do they want to do at the fire department?
Dogs for Justice.
Fire department, because there's Labor Day, when would they want to do it?
I think they're open.
Because I know that, um. You know, they're kind of hurting with this money for this fighter up there.
Right.
So there's quite a bit of rules they have to follow. Do they know that? Are they familiar with a lot of rules?
There's, there are definitely rules.
About different signage they have to buy.
Yeah.
Disclaimer for if they get run over, thank you.
No dogs in your road. Cat's running into stuff, it's like a stoplight, it's equal.
Well, I wouldn't do it until the bridge is fixed.
Exactly.
I'd be really aggravated.
If I got stopped twice, yeah.
Oh, you're talking about, oh, yeah, yeah.
I guess I'd wanna know when they want to do it.
Okay, I'll get more details.
The end of June, they will be done with the bridge and the guardrails. That's the guy I talk to. Who's now letting me for getting some.
Sheriff's contract, you know, the sheriff's contract is due at the end of this month, yeah. And we postponed it from our last meeting. If there's any potential changes to the contract or modifications. I haven't heard from anybody of any thoughts that you have. I, I honestly don't. So I don't know what would we put in that contract that would significantly change what we have now for service.
Maybe Ben responds to when we need him for dogs?
No, it's not their responsibility, no. So I haven't actually even looked at it. So I didn't know I was supposed to, was supposed to respond to you. Looking over and respond.
Oh, yeah, because we had, it was in our last.
It is, and I have the, but I, sorry.
Yeah, no problem. We got to the end of them. Transfer station, just an update, security, the garage door was installed at the cans and bottles. With a lock, camera sign is up there. The gate has been welded, so it can't be removed. We, also, as I mentioned last time, we were inspected by the state. And there's a couple of things that have come up since, as they reviewed their photographs. They're, they're fairly minor. Primarily, it is, we have a sign up there that says, it should say. Ban and it's electronics and it lists all the electronics, computers, so forth and so on. But the portion at the top that says items banned has faded so badly.
Oh.
See it? So, so it looks like you're inviting this stuff.
Oh, no, 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 we don't want you.
So they kind of, you know, they kind of, the post, the permit has been posted up there. So that's all. On the highway, we have a letter of intent for the grants and aid program. Safe seats, streets and roads, I had mentioned. Brooke Road, I talked to Lucian today and he's still shooting for joy. Although it sounds like casting is not happening. Heard from him.
Yes, I've heard from him. So the process is that, and you know, but the other board member knows that. The company that's creating the culvert or whatever, those shop drawings, then they're reviewed by. Engineer Joey Wilson, and they reviewed them, they saw that. It was supposed to include epoxy reinforced rebar. That's a state requirement. It wasn't on the drawing, so they sent them back, you know, got in touch with. GNN and told them that that needed to be included. That's as far as we know. Lucian said it only took like a week or so for the culvert to be made. It's a really compressed, fast drying. You could actually get it the next day. So I don't, I don't know. Long Cody did call me to the, today to confirm. When to take out the temporary bridge, but I couldn't tell him anything. And I'm waiting to write a letter to everybody on that road too. I'm all waiting on that date.
Right, right. And, and the road crew is also waiting on that date because they need to make some.
They have to make that temporary driveway. So are we gonna go back to this letter of this resolution?
A letter of intent?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, so that's the grants and aid program.
Right. So you're familiar with that? Every year, the highway department has got one of these grants and aids. Programs and usually LCPC instrument is instrumental in doing all the paperwork. It's gonna change for fiscal year twenty three. So this is just a letters that we need to certify that we want to apply. For some money, we can get up to twenty thousand dollars, our shares five thousand, to. Construct or fix those segments. To bring connected roads, segments into proper lanes within municipal roads' general permit standards. So I guess just we'd be wanting authorization to.
Yeah, to authorization to sign this and to move forward with it. The segments, uh, I think you have to have fifteen percent segments complete. And Dylan does have these paper, he hasn't put them into the computer yet, but. We're moving, moving on now. That has to be by the end of this month.
Well, I estimate by the end of December, but we wanted them in sooner so that we'd know if we hit the mark or not.
Right.
Rob Moore said he'd help them.
Yeah, and Rob has been, yeah. Yeah, Rob has.
Great.
So this requires a select board signature?
Yeah, yeah, that's all. I just make sure that the municipality. Wants, the board wants to apply, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And if one of these segments is on a class, poor road is, is still qualified for this?
Um, there are some monies, it doesn't spell it out here. I'm reading some of them.
Because in Dylan's budget right now, he has five thousand in cost for, but he hasn't even used this year. And I don't know, maybe.
Well, he's gonna be going over and rolling.
Okay.
He's gonna need it.
Okay.
And, and fuel.
So you, so you really need to, and he needs to look at that and he needs to do the high priorities first.
I just did know if we had match, right?
It's five thousand match, but it would be. Uh, in next year's budget, it could be, has to be completed by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So if we work it right, it'll be in next year's budget.
Okay, so.
The board's okay with it.
We'll pass it around, signature. So the town. I'm sorry, town, Iowa, town highway structure grant. So I don't know if you know what this means, but the, the town, the. The engineering. I'm ready to inform you that your application for the town highway structures program grant for. Town Hill Road Engineering Grant has been recommended for approval. Which is good, that's good news. This is where, just to move the call on Town Hill forward. This was denied as, as an emergency grant. But as proved at the engineering stage, which we're doing now.
So the engineering grant is for a hundred and five thousand and that's what District Six recommended. For us, because they're not sure whether fixing the culvert is the right answer or not. They need to do a hydraulic study. It'll do all the environmental, blah, 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 blah. All the things that, that the state requires, so we were awarded that grant. I do have a question. So our engineer. That we have wrote the bid proposal. Now, is, is that, it gonna be good enough to, to have him do it? Continue on? Do you have to rebid it?
Well, the project may require a, go an environmental review or.
I don't think so. I think that's more of a place to. I submitted his bid for the grant.
And I see.
And he had a discussion with, with him, had a discussion with District Six too personally at that meeting.
With Michelle?
No, with the two guys.
Other guys.
Yeah. So I wondered if we were comfortable when we get the. Rent agreement that he just. Do it.
That he just do it, right? I can call to verify that.
All right.
I'll do that. Okay, second recording I just talked about, and my final one is East Hill Road. As you know. The sheriff went up to East Hill Road, a letter was sent as a follow-up stating that. Ed had until May thirty first to take the property. The sheriff's detective went up today and found him still to be there. He asked, uh, how's the moving going? Are you getting things ready for the move? And Ed told him that he's not leaving.
He's, he's trespassing at this point, right?
Oh, absolutely.
All right. I'd say they go in, arrest his ass, bulldoze everything. He can sit on the rubble if he wants to, really. But this is enough for this.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, this.
Well, this is where, this is where we're at right now. So, so he told the detective that there's no, you know, he. Okay, he has quite a number of supporters.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I think, I think neighbors that, you know, are probably. Trying to help in, in some way, but this is where five years into it.
Enough.
Yeah, and so the plan is, is that we're gonna get a solid date from all metals as to when they're gonna come in for demolition. And then the sheriff will go up in advance and if he refuses to leave, he'll be arrested.
Right.
And the dean will be notified right behind him to pick up the dog. And also put out, have a heart traps for the federal cats and then the demolition will occur.
It's enough. I mean, everybody's been profoundly humane and diplomatic and that's all used up. It's gotta be.
I think it's, you know, it's unfortunate, it really is. I think he's hurting himself here.
But he has, it's unsafe. I mean, he's, he hasn't got so rich or anything acceptable.
Isn't, it's in violation of. Zoning laws, everything.
In the last I heard, there is at least one or two mother cats with kittens now.
Okay.
Is he not right? I, maybe you can't say that because you're, I, I, I'm sorry, I worked with mentally ill people for years and elderly. Is, is he a vulnerable adult?
I'm sure he is, yeah.
Just be careful, because you might be getting yourself, I, I mean, I know you know your jobs, I'm not telling you, I, I don't even understand this. But if he's a vulnerable adult and this is going on, be careful.
Of what? Being hunted?
No, I didn't mean that. I mean. It, it might not look good in the legal world or something, or in the mental health world.
So are the police that are there, do they have anyone within their department that could kind of assess that when they go up?
Yes.
They need somebody, I think, to talk with him.
So maybe, you know, next time to talk to us, suggest that they have someone in their department.
I, I realize where you're all coming from. He stopped and talked to me because I'm outside. And I feel safe because I got a dog that she.
Why did it come up all the time? Big fight, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I don't think he's working on all restors. I mean, to live like that, and I, 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 I mean, some people choose it, but just talking with him. And knowing the people that I've worked with for thirteen years and knowing people that I know, it's like. I don't think he's gonna go out and shoot anybody. I mean, he might get a following that it would come back on you guys.
So.
I know that's risky, but he, I think what Linda said is a good idea. That somebody may wanna go in and talk to him. I don't really know anything about him other than he stopped and talked to me, so I'm out there, putting my own guard.
I've talked to him several times. It seems like a reasonable guy. It's just, he just, but he absolutely refuses. Uh, to acknowledge that he's squatting on town property and. We want to sell the property, our brothers want to buy the property. It's, it's small area in which there's no.
Yeah, I, I went up there once, I don't remember. Except I'm concerned about the animals.
So the environment is being poisoned up there and it's a legal issue. It's been turned over to the sheriff.
But it, it does seem like, you know.
Well, if you can recommend a social service person to get up there, that would be great. I don't know what the sheriff can come up with.
Because he, I really feel he needs somebody in the bathroom.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, he actually, when he was originally evicted, the state did attempt to help him. And social workers attempted to help him and he came back.
Yeah, that would be cool right there, believe it or not, but I mean, to me, it's, the more I hear about it from various people, it's like. And I don't really wanna get involved, but I just am like, my conscience has been bothered me having worked. And I don't really wanna get involved, but I just am like, my conscience has been bothered me having worked for mental health, and I know I have to. You know, and I'm like, do you think he needs some support?
Yeah. It's a hard situation. It really isn't. I don't like being in it. You never make being in it. Anyway, that's where we're at.
Okay, I just wanted to throw that out there, just having talked with him, and I'm not a therapist, but I have. Plenty of education and I have plenty of experience, and I thought, he, I mean, you're doing better than me, and I would have taken him off.
I have for years, it's fine.
Yeah, but, you know, I'm just. And my job wouldn't allow them to care anyway.
So that's my.
So the one thing is the. Lease. Or the loaner.
That's the next one we agenda. Isn't that?
Can we?
Yeah.
Cuz I think it should be involved.
So I guess, my thought was about the agenda, but the. I did put together a multi-year plan. Regarding equipment. And, you know, kind of the best practices, best play over the long, long term. To handle the finances behind major equipment. It is just a roadmap only for your review. This goes out ten, twenty years, and other select boards in the future will, you know, want to maybe follow it, but it, I think it is a good baseline. Plan. And what it does is it, it kind of puts an anchor down as to what does it really cost. With that, you put. And currently, we put seventy-seven thousand dollars into the equipment fund, and if we were to have all equipment in rotation. That number would go, would go up to. I think about a hundred and twenty thousand. However, having said that, what we currently have on the plate is the town truck. Truck. That we've been waiting for, and hopefully, hopefully would be delivered in November. It broke down yesterday. For a twelve-hundred-dollar tow to the shop. We'll see where it goes from there. So, yeah, this, this is what happens when we wait too long. It's not anybody's fault that we waited. It's the supply chain. The other is the loader. We had took three bids for loaders. One from Volvo Cat and John Beer, the only one available in stock and. And recommended by Dylan and crew is the Volvo from CRW here. We do have a lease agreement, a lease application. And the rate is just below four percent right now. And so the question is, to go forward with that?
Do we have further questions on that?
No, I've been in the position of all over the long for the. It's a bird in the hand.
Yeah.
And it's a high-quality item. I know it's expensive, but. You, you'll have it.
I'm just afraid we won't have it for flower season if we don't jump on it.
Yeah.
So those trucks.
It's the most important piece of equipment we have.
Is it trying to make a motion on this?
Yes.
All right, I make a motion that we pursue the purchase option for the Volvo motor. As it's available and high-quality and much-needed.
For a second?
All second.
Any other discussion?
No. Are we able to give a different way of financing it, other than through that?
Yeah, this is actually going to go State Bank, Kansas. That's where we're finding the best rates. We did get a call from Union Bank locally, but they're not putting in a lease, they're putting in purchase. That makes it kind of forgetful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll listen, favor.
All right.
Close. So Perry. You talked about the town barrage quotes, plan to clean up the schoolhouse. You guys, you guys went to look at it. Today, have any suggestions? At this time, or do you want to discuss it and bring them up next time, next meeting?
We saw a lot of scrap metal. And it would be a matter of getting it hauled into the transfer station.
There's always scraps up enough to warrant taking into the scrapyard.
You're, you're gonna get the same amount.
Oh, yeah, you're right. They, they would be.
Because they're gonna pay us any time.
Okay, good. This is shorter distance. We can, we're on a Saturday here or something.
Yeah. There's old heaters, there's a hot water heater, there's old fans, you name it. That we can get rid of easily. The other thing that we thought about was there's doors, windows, some cabinets.
I think so, yeah.
And some children's desks. We were going to go to resource. And ask them if they were interested in them. And if they were, what they would give us for them.
Oh, research won't give you anything.
But at least it'd be cheaper to take it into.
Yeah, yes, if they get utilized, that's a wonderful thing. But those are those institutional doors, aren't they?
No, these are just regular hollow internal doors, the cheap ones. But the windows are the single pane. They're, what would you say, four foot by eight foot?
Probably.
Someone might want for coal frame or something.
Not coal frames or making out of a hothouse, whatever. But the children's desk, I don't know. I don't know if we have anyone that's doing. I don't wanna call it home-study, homeschooling, homeschooling. It'd be ideal up to, I don't know, maybe a. Eighth grade level, because you can adjust the lengths on your chairs and your tables, so I don't know if we ought to.
Well, why don't you take the inventory and, you know, we can fill up from what's formed. Prepare for it, and we just wanna get that stuff out of there.
I mean, there's a dozen of them. Of those desks, and if you wanna put them on there, to ask someone that wants to take them.
Okay.
The, the name numbers and give them the date, time, and we can kind of take them. But it's, the other thing is just getting this rat metal somewhere to haul it up there to the transfer station.
You think the road crew could leave their small truck here on, like, on the weekend, and you could fill it, and then?
We'll take, we'll take trips.
Well, they could slow, you could slowly do it.
I think the one-ton truck, it's actually like the one-ton. That doesn't require a C E O.
No.
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 Even like.
You're, you're volunteering?
No. I like S U B's.
So why don't you figure out maybe sometime where we can, a date, if you wanna work on that. And we'll get the truck over here. You come report back next time.
So I'll try to get hold of resource.
Okay.
Who's coming to get.
Those figures.
Oh, isn't, isn't Brian Burgess?
Manager down here. He was, he was.
He isn't?
He was. I haven't been in there in a while.
I know, I had no idea. Who or what. But if they wanna take the windows and doors, so you're trying to get rid of your landfill. Save a lot of money.
So we're gonna review the delinquent tax policy?
This is one person.
Yeah, it's a, this is actually. Krista Perkins. With, with whom we. Created a payment plan for, for taxes last year. And also gave her access to the transfer stations to reduce the health hazard. And currently, she's at eight hundred dollars, I believe.
Almost, yeah.
Almost what?
Eight hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
For garbage?
Yeah. And, yeah, and the garbage doesn't seem to go down at her, her place. I don't, I don't know what's happening.
She's sending donations for her other friends.
Apparently.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't be saying that about this, but.
So something, something has gone awry. I, you thought that that was really a good plan, a good way to. Help her clean up and et cetera, but after a year, it's, it's not working.
Well, then, she's under braking.
Still owes five hundred from last year's taxes, plus she's added another twenty-five hundred just barely from this year.
For this year's taxes, so. So it's one of those situations where it's just. Getting worse and worse and worse.
So she did not, she signed a contract, and she didn't keep to it?
No, her son-in-law was coming in for a while, and he dropped a hundred off for, you know, forty for the garbage and stuff. I was seeing him for three weeks, at least, probably four. And then he kept telling me that she was gonna come in and license the dogs. That's the other thing, she doesn't license her dog or her daughter. I had to license her dogs there. And Kurt did get a complaint from a neighbor that lives up the road, a mortgage held. She came to pay her taxes and made a complaint about that.
There's a lot of links.
Yeah.
Well, we've, we've made an effort.
Yeah.
I, I just don't, I don't wanna be sounding aggrieved, but maybe just cuz I'm old and don't have the patience, I used to, but. If she's not complying, even I have very reasonable arrangement and law under her.
So I think we also let her know she can no longer take garbage.
And that her tax, delinquent tax agreement is null and void.
And that will, I'll have to send her to a lawyer.
Well, it's pretty bad with all that garbage. It's a condemnable situation, isn't it? Health hazards, et cetera.
Yeah, it's really bad. It's raps.
But I don't buy it in fact, though.
Well, why can't you do a health, condemn it or something, a health thing?
Let the health attorney come in and give her the death.
That would see her.
Yeah, so we do send Bernard up there. Bernard goes up once a week or so. And nothing changes, just nothing changes.
Maybe somebody needs to go for. To know.
So I've talked with her several times, and we've really, really tried to get every opportunity possible. To not, and I just don't dare. Also, we tried to refer her to one of the ARPA programs. Which would. For individuals that are having tax difficulties, or maybe facing eviction. Can, can help her out. But she.
Hasn't pursued that either?
No.
She refused it as a, as, she doesn't take end-ups.
Doesn't take one?
End-ups, so she does.
Well, she's gonna be homeless if she doesn't do something.
We have had a few people in town who have applied to the V H F A assisted program, and we're just waiting to get payment on them, so.
It works, it works. And she's certainly qualified for it. She just refuses to do it.
Well, I mean, how much more can we do? It's. And it's an ongoing, from say the garbage sector multiplying.
That's the weird thing. That's the.
No, it's, she's out of time.
I think obviously she's sending donations from the robbers. Build up the pile for illicit dummies, so. But okay, it is on license.
Which, it's, it's a health hazard.
Oh, yeah.
And that's what bothers the neighbors, because for good reason, I mean, rats go into their yards and gardens and so forth.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we just go.
Yeah, I do.
So I can send a letter about the taxes. Do you wanna send a letter about the trash? Both of them. The other thing, just cuz we're on delinquent taxes, um. This year has been very interesting. I did send around an email the fact that we did have more. Delinquent taxes this year, but it's actually because of the escrow company. I'm having major problems. They're saying they send the checks, and we have never received them. Or I get them and they're mangled, and I have to apply for another check, or. Maybe they went somewhere else. I don't know. But taxpayers are upset.
Yeah, I can understand that.
Yeah, and I keep referring them to go to your escrow company. One guy goes, well, I never talked to them. This is your account. You have to talk to them. So, and I can say, give them my phone number, I'll talk to them and explain that I've never received this check.
It is kind of strange that this happened. I think it's just our postmaster has finally. Screwed things up really well.
No, it's, it's happening throughout the state.
Yeah.
We even found out how he got it.
I, I take one.
This happened in Mary. It's happening in Williamstown.
I didn't mean our local, I didn't mean our local.
One guy goes, oh gee. He's supposed to be in with my mortgage. And he gets a thing from the town clerk that he's delinquent, and then the next thing you know, oh, it's not delinquent. We got the check two days ago. It's.
So this is what.
Also.
No, it's the banks.
I did get one mangled in the mail on twenty-first, but since they, it said, you know, they. They mailed, they mailed it the tenth, and I got it the twenty-first, and it went through some process and got held up. And the second one was the FedEx guy told us they pick a town because they don't have enough drivers where they're going to deliver that day. And they try to rotate it. And then Mr. Redd, who was very upset and, and thought that I must have lost his check, he finally called. And got somebody who was actually honest with him, instead he got held up in their mailroom and never got paid.
This is bullshit. Really, I mean, we're talking monies here that are critical.
I'm.
We don't, we don't get, I hand-deliver our repair and fuel budget payments to Fred's. I do not send them in the mail anymore.
Well, Mr., the peanut came in today, and he sent his, um. What was it? He, he, he knew he was late, and he sent it, and by the time he got here, it was more in, penalty applied, because. He said, I should have just drove it up. He said, it would have cost me less to drive it and spend the gas than to come, you know? And he did, he came up with the twenty-eight dollars deal. Because we have a, and that's the other thing that's been there, cuz people don't understand that they voted on this at town meeting. That we have a plus, minus, well, scale of three percent penalty and a five percent penalty, and then eight percent. One woman called me up in the spring that made me send him her two different bills. I said, if you actually need the inclusion with it, it explains that this is how the town does it.
So we might wanna make it simpler. Yeah, send one bill at the end, because it is too confusing. They can't understand it.
But the thing is, is they have to be able to pay the three percent if they don't know about it.
They need to figure it out by looking at their bill, but. That's the problem. They don't understand it.
And the escrow people assume they're gorgeous, which is okay. So I don't blame them, but I say you have to talk to escrow.
So one thing that's not on here, I did call Matt Foster. There's no mask requirement at the school. It's optional. It's optional. It's not what we want. You need to get in touch with Bill.
I did.
And about whether they need microphones or things set up, whatever you need, you need to let.
So Dylan is gonna be there. So I'm just gonna bring the microphones we had before and just do what we did.
You brought your own last night?
Remember the handheld?
Yeah, those are yours?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And we will have one for the audience.
We hope to see everybody there.
Honestly, I understand.
You said in the newspaper. About being for, I'm not trying to get rid of town meeting or screw anybody over.
No, I do agree with you. I think it's. I totally agree with it.
Yeah, I'm not out to get anybody or take away their job or get rid of town meeting. I'm out to help the taxpayers and the people who lived in this town and who can't come. They have a legitimate. Say, they should have a legitimate say.
Yeah, well, I agree.
I've had five people come up and go, this is going to get rid of town meeting.
No.
And I looked them straight in the eye and I went, what?
Why don't you just tell them to call your wife?
No, it's easier explaining to them. That it's more democratic, that you have an Australian ballot, so everyone has a say in it. You still have the budget where you can come and vote and decide on it.
I just hope they acquire some information along with their blind Bella. Somewhere.
I I.
Before they go out.
Like people just being nominated from the floor. I think you should know who your candidate is for running, you know, your town and have an opportunity to talk to people.
Wasn't that what you do before? We couldn't because of COVID, but you have people sign up before that they want to run for that.
Only for COVID, but it it it, we didn't have it before. You, you know.
I understand.
We will now, if it passes.
Don't you, like, you see, I keep asking stuff.
Anything else?
I know, I'm gonna get. Like a motion for a trial.
Yeah. Thank you.
I have eight for you. They clearly. Sure.
Yeah.